Good evening, I'll call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. If you'll please stand for our invocation and pledge.
Let's pray. Our decorations, Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for this day, we thank you for the beautiful weather in the springtime, thank you for this opportunity to come as a city council and as citizens of this fine city to do the business of the city. Go before us, may everything that's said and done here tonight be honoring to you and give us wisdom as we go forward to make decisions. Thank you for this evening and may everything be done to your glory and it's in your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Omar, the roll please.
Carrie Hodges, Ward 1.
Here.
Jason Stiff, Ward 2.
Here.
Carrie Rock, Ward 3.
Here.
Calvin Cooley, Ward 4.
Here.
Gary Fox, Ward 5.
Here.
Pat Rin, Ward 6.
Here.
Thank you, Meredith. First order of business is the approval of our council meeting minutes for March 15th. Councilman Fox, I know you had an edit that you'd like to put in that, so I'll let you speak to that off the top.
Yes, in relation to the transportation issue, what was it, MPO?
Yeah.
I was ready for it, seeing the track of the block commission road to expand the station to look at how you could possibly move over that track somewhere. It could be a Sugar Valley, it could be Mission, it could be a Dog Day, or a Park Tree, it could be Alaska. That's how I wanted to put it.
Did they get the resolution y'all passed or no?
We amended what we were sending to the MPO to include...
Did that go back to...
To expand the scope of.
Okay.
Of course, the thing that we sent to them, the application for that was past the deadline, so I'll let the MPO transportation manager discuss that.
It's an assistant that passed.
Anyhow, so we've got that edit to the minutes from the last meeting. Ms. Omar, did you catch that?
I did.
Thank you. Any other edits or additions, deletions to the minutes from our March 15th meeting? And if not, Chair will entertain a motion on the minutes.
I'm making a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those minutes are approved. We begin this evening with recognizing someone who's contributed to the city, who's stepping away with other duties, and Mr. Menino, I'll let you kick that off for us, please.
Thank you, Mayor. As you noted, we will be recognizing David Caswell tonight. He spent at least seven years on the Board of Zoning Appeals. Prior to that, he actually spent time on the Planning Commission, serving the city. So, we'd like David to come on up here and recognize him and thank him for his service to the city.
I don't know if you want to say anything, but we certainly appreciate it.
Man of few words. He's ready to get the boys and leave. David, we do thank you for your contribution, not just through the Board of Zoning Appeals, but again, the Planning Commission and the Second JDA and quite frankly, just a lot of other things in the community that aren't government-related. So, we do have a plaque for you that I'd be delighted to present to you, and it says that this token of appreciation is presented to David Caswell in recognition of your knowledge, commitment, and service to the City of Cartersville Board of Zoning Appeals 2011 to 2018. And I get to come down and hand it to you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Highlight your day.
I appreciate you.
Well, I was proud to be part of it, so thank you.
I can get a picture.
They all walk fine.
All right.
You're welcome to stay, but I know that you probably have something to do.
I always want to say hello my complete.
All right, we have a series of public hearings tonight. First is Z-18-03. Randy, if you'll continue on with the Menino Show tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. As you noted, this is zoning case Z-1803. This is actually zoning we heard back in 2004. The property was originally rezoned from R-20 to R-10 for an open space design. A portion of it was developed on the opposite side of Center Road. Seventy-nine lots were platted and approved in Autumn Canyon. With that, a portion of this piece that's before you tonight has also been developed and infrastructure put in for, I believe, up to 199 lots, which was Phase 1 of Edouard Preserve subdivision. With that, the applicant is looking to take the portion that was developed as Edouard Preserve subdivision and rezone that from the R-10 category to the R-12 category, and the remaining portion to go back to or rezone it to the R-20, single-family residential zoning category that it was from 1981 until 2004. The applicant has come in with a townhome proposal on the existing infrastructure that was installed. No single-family lots, no houses were ever built in there. It happened probably right about the time of the downturn in the economy. The streets have not been utilized, they are in kind of tough shape. They were final-platted in our jurisdiction and under our jurisdiction, and there was some bond money that was placed on that, but we're, as part of the development process, depending on if these roads remain city roads or they become private roads, will depend on how the bond proceeds will be spent for the infrastructure improvements in there. With that, there were several conditions already placed on the property, and some will be carrying forward. Planning Commission did hear this, and this was reviewed based on the standards for exercise of zoning powers. Appears the property was properly advertised and posted, there appears to be no conflicts of interest. With that, Planning Commission did recommend approval of this application. I had handed y'all out the actual Planning Commission recommending conditions. The six original were in your package, two additional were added at the meeting based on some input. A couple adjacent property owners had a representative here and brought up some concerns that they had. With that, Planning Commission did add number seven and eight that are on your list of conditions there. Additionally, on condition number eight, the representative, Mr. Watkins, who is unable to be here today, did make comment on condition number eight, and I attached that to the recommendations that you have that are from the Planning Commission. With that, the applicant is present, and Planning Commission did recommend approval of this application.
Sure. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Menino at this point? Sorry, Randy. Seeing none, I will open a public hearing relative to file case Z-18-03, and anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing for Z-18-03. This is a first reading, so council, we will take this up for final consideration at our next meeting. Randy, moving on to T-18-01, please.
Thank you again, Mayor and council. This is a proposed text amendment to the sign ordinance. It's twofold. One, we have a proposed racetrack coming to the City of Cartersville on East Main Street. Back in 2007, we amended the sign ordinance to allow for auto-fueling stations to have changeable copy because prices were changing so quickly on gas stations, they preferred to do it electronically as opposed to going up there and doing the hand-changing of the boards. When we redid the ordinance again in, I don't know, 2010 or '12, that portion ended up getting eliminated. So, the proposed text amendment covers two things. One, it does allow for the electronic pricing boards on East Main Street from 75 down to 41 for fueling stations. And two, we've had several complaints dealing with electronic sign brightness on two signs in the city particularly, in particular. And with that, we have put some standards in the ordinance that deal with the brightness and how we can address it in the future for future signs that come in.
Should've asked you this in the work session. We cleaned this up, are the two signs that are kind of the problem now, are they grandfathered in and don't have to follow this, or...
One is definitely. There is an additional one in the same area that we feel, based on their comments they made during the Board of Zoning Appeals hearing, that it can be made to be a little less bright at night.
That's the big one, right?
The big one, yes, the billboard. And the representative who represented that at the BZA meeting did note that he is talking with the property owners about that matter in particular. But with this, it provides some limits of measure. Now, we would have to purchase a lumen meter to make sure we can track and so forth, but it does provide some standards. Planning Commission did hear this. Now, they're not required to hear this because it's sign ordinance, it's not zoning ordinance. They also have a few other suggestions that we'll be looking at in the future, but to move forward for racetrack and what they're wanting to do, and go ahead and add some standards for lighting for electronic signs, we would like to move forward with this.
Okay. Any questions for Randy at this point? Thank you. I'll open up a public hearing for T-18-01. Anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. We'll move on to T-18-02.
Thank you again. This particular proposed text amendment is to the MU zoning district. Currently, the MU zoning district allows for several different uses, not just commercial and residential, it allows for different types of residential, townhouses, apartments. And within the district itself, say for apartments, we actually have the apartment standards listed in there and referenced. When we moved this, the townhome standards, which townhomes are allowed in the MU district also, we did not place the standards in there and reference back to the standards. All this does is corrects the ordinance and moves the townhome standards to be also included in the MU portion of the zoning ordinance. With that, Planning Commission did recommend approval of this text amendment.
Questions or comments for Randy right now? Thank you, sir. Open up a public hearing for T-18-02. Anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing for T-18-02. Again, council, we'll take this up for final consideration at our next meeting. Randy, if we get us kicked off on the next item, the appeal of the decision by the Historic Preservation Commission.
Thank you again, Mayor and council. A property located at 716 West Avenue had gone through the Historic Preservation Commission, had an application before them on February 21st in 2017. With that, they got HBC approval to do modifications to an existing historic structure, went through the process, and towards the end of the process, which they're probably in right now, the property was, or the structure was painted. Painting brick that has not been previously painted is not allowed in the historic districts. With that, they brought an application back before the Historic Preservation Commission. Historic Preservation Commission denied that application and requested that the primer be removed on that property, and with that, the applicant has appealed the Historic Preservation Commission's decision to you. I believe the applicant is present for this application.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Menino before we, I guess, to start this thing off? Thank you, Randy. All right, we are here to listen. Anybody wishing to step forward, may do so at this time, and I will ask for our clerk if you'll give your name and your address when coming forward to speak.
Sure. My name is Thomas Worthy. My address is 384 Redland Road, R-E-D-L-A-N-D, in Atlanta, 30309. Mayor Santini, Mayor Pro Tim Cooley, members of the council. As I mentioned, my name is Thomas Worthy, and I'm here to respectfully request that you reverse the Cartersville Historic Preservation Commission's March 20th decision in COP 1704 to deny Matt and Caroline Womack's request to paint unpainted brick at 716 West Avenue. I'm an attorney in private practice, splitting my time between Atlanta and my hometown down the road of Carrollton. Prior to law school, I worked in Washington DC for three years in both the administration and the US House of Representatives. I've been practicing law for about seven and a half years, with the exception of three and a half years where I served as Governor Deal's executive counsel, and I oversaw all administrative law and legal matters with the executive branch of the state. In September 2014, Matt and Caroline Womack moved back to Matt's hometown here in Cartersville to raise their family. They purchased a home at 716 West Avenue, and during that process, the inspectors found significant deterioration in the stability, soundness, and durability of the brick. He guessed at that time that there was too much sand used in the mortar when it was built back in the early 30s. In April 2017, they spent thousands of dollars to renovate the home with maintaining historical integrity as their number-one priority. They had two, they employed two brick crews to make sure it was done right, and they had to replace large portions of bricks that were damaged beyond repair. The deterioration also caused collapse in their crawl space, they had to seal it and clean it out where it allowed vermin to enter. They made every effort to match the brick and the mortar, but because of the difference in time, that was impossible. So, in early 2018, they decided to paint their house in maritime white. They primed the house. On March 8th of 2018, they got a stop-work notice. They wrote a letter to the HPC on March 9th, and then on March 20th, the HPC denied their request. In my opinion, the council should reverse HPC's decision based on three reasons. Number one, necessity. Number two, vagueness and conflict within HPC's own guidelines. And number three, community support. First, necessity. The Womack dwelling had visible affluence, which on the exterior, brick and mortar, that is a fine, white, powdery substance that is a deposit of water-soluble salts left on masonry surface when it, water evaporates and masonry deteriorates. The building practices of the 1930s create an ideal environment for this to occur because back then, the mortar had excess sand, they did not flash the brickwork, and original joints are not tooled. In fact, in the State of Georgia's Historic Preservation Handbook, it states on page 109, "Early masonry workmanship was often very poor, especially in walls that were not visible. The mortar used was soft and weak by today's standards, being made only of lime and sand with no cement. The porosity of the brick itself often led owners to paint their brick buildings, a consideration to bear in mind when thinking of stripping paint off of a historic building." Deterioration problems most commonly associated with historic brick masonry are generally the result of high porosity and softness of the brick and mortar. High porosity leads to moisture penetration in the wall, either as liquid or vapor from exposure to rain, from rising damp, or for condensation on the inner portion of the brick. Mr. Kyle Russell, the painter here, can talk to you more about that as an expert if you would like, but the literature and technical guidance make it clear, the only way to stop this moisture invasion is to try to create as much of a water-resistant brick wall as you can. Second, vagueness and conflict within HPC's own guidelines. The HPC unanimously voted to deny this application and require the primer to be removed, and in so doing, they cited their guidelines as well as the US Secretary for the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation. HPC's decision is based on tenuous legal footing, in my opinion, and I doubt that it would be upheld by the Bartow County Superior Court. The, first of all, the residential guidelines for the HPC are vague, perhaps unconstitutionally so. It reads, "Only it is not appropriate to paint unpainted masonry surfaces that were not painted historically." It is not the purpose of the American legal system or legislative bodies that create it to tell citizens what is or is not appropriate. It is the, what they are supposed to do is tell what citizens what they may and shall do and what they shall not do. The US Supreme Court, in their seminal decision, Coach versus Cincinnati, stated that laws, ordinances, or guidelines with the effect of law are unconstitutionally vague when it does not specifically enumerate the practices that are either required or prohibited. It is unconstitutionally vague if the ordinary citizen does not know what the law requires. Here, because of exactly what I explained in the necessity piece, the Womacks, who are more than ordinary citizens, who are upstanding citizens, believe that painting their home to be appropriate. And the guideline does not specifically prohibit it because it does not say, "You shall not paint a brick surface." Interestingly enough, in the downtown guidelines of the Historic Preservation Commission, they actually say, "You do not need to paint, you cannot paint surfaces." In fact, it says, "Do not paint coat or waterproof unpainted masonry. Do not sandblast exterior surfaces." While the downtown guideline is very clear, the residential guideline is not clear at all, and in fact, the HPC's order that said that they must remove their primer would require them to either coat the house with a paint remover or sandblast the primer off. Lastly, the HPC is clearly misinterpreting and misapplying the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation. To be candid, those guidelines state that they are applying paint or other coatings to masonry is not recommended. I have reviewed the HPC's past decision, and it appears as if they operate under the belief that in order to maintain Cartersville historic area status, they have to turn down every request to paint unpainted brick. This is a clear misuse of the secretary's guidelines. First, those guidelines itself on page one state, "They are not meant to give case-specific advice or address exceptions or unusual conditions." Second, they use "not recommended" rather than "prohibited" or "barred," similar vagueness. And lastly, I actually contacted the US Department of Interior Solicitors Office, got in touch with the senior advisor there named Josh Campbell. He will be sharing a letter with you and the HPC supporting this viewpoint, but I actually have a voicemail on my phone that I'm happy to play for the council that he says, "This is clear that the local board is taking some guidelines, misinterpreting them, and using them as a hammer." Lastly, community support. The Womacks chose to live in this historic district, they chose to invest a lot of time, money, and love into their home to raise their adorable family, and their neighbors know them. Their neighbors know them to be good neighbors, their neighbors know them to be productive citizens, and as such, their community and their neighbors support them. You have letters that I think Ms. Womack passed out from Governor Harris and Dr. Zim Choat echoing that support. So, with that, I think that the necessity, the vagueness in the legal issues that comes up, and the community support is more than enough for me to respectfully request that you reverse HPC's denial and lift the stop-work order. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I know Matt and Caroline are as well.
Any questions at this point? All right, thank you. You care to speak?
We need to...
Okay. All right. Anybody else wishing to step forward and speak on this matter? All righty then. Well, this is a public hearing. We've listened. What do you want to do now, council?
Everybody's looking at me.
No, I'm not, I'm looking around because I was...
I wasn't looking over here, so I don't know if they were looking at it, but everybody was looking at. I mean, you know, we have guidelines, Matt and I have spoken about this matter, and I know that a few of us on council have, and, you know, we, the Historic Preservation Committee is volunteers and they're appointed by us, and they put a lot of time and effort into everything that they do, and we appreciate them very much. And it's guidelines that actually council sets, that we put on them, that then they in turn put on you guys. If you'd have asked me if painting a brick home was in there, I have no clue. So, it's definitely brought up something that I think as a council, we need to look into. If it's appropriate and needs to be used, we need to change our guidelines to give the Historic Preservation Committee better tools for when people are coming into our community to do a better job and to clean up the house. I've rode by the house, I know a couple of us have, and thank you for what you're doing to the community and bettering it. So, I was actually on the phone with Carrie earlier today and was watching the Masters. I don't know if anybody knows that that golf tournament's going on. In the backdrop, there is a white, very beautiful clubhouse sitting there, well, it might not have been the actual clubhouse, but just down, painted white brick. So, it's something that, and that was just after we got off the phone. So, if they can do it, and as historic as that facility is, maybe we can do some stuff around here that we will look at and give our team and staff better tools for the next person that comes through. So, with all that being said, are you ready for, is it, am I just having...
I want to make sure that anybody's got the opportunity to speak before council takes any action.
I'd like to.
It's a public hearing, you need to step forward, give your name and address, and...
Yes, the skinny jewel suit, West Avenue. I also live on West Avenue. We live in a house that was built in 1939. What they're doing is fine. I mean, these old houses are not well-kept, are not well-built. We live in a block house, it's plaster, it's been painted several times. We're still not finished with it, and we rigged. So, whatever they're doing, I know this house is a beautiful house, I've seen the work they've done on it. I'm with them.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
I do think at this point, we have an obligation as a council and a city to review some of the guidelines that are in the HPC, get it cleaned up, make some opportunity for there to be a little leeway on making decisions when things are deteriorating past the point of just a small repair, to offer the homeowners that are putting so much money and time to better our community. I think that's a very important part of this.
Again, this is a public hearing, if you care to, you can step forward, and again, your name and address for our clerk, please.
My name is Suzanne Benoit. I live at 215 West Cherokee Avenue. I'm just standing up here to let you know that I own two buildings in Douglasville on Broad Street. They were built in the 20s, they're brick. I have had issue after issue after issue because of the old brick. You scrape, you don't know how to fill it in, there's a technique where you move the, what do you call that, Jimmy?
Repointing?
Yes, repointing. But you watch it falling down in front of you. I think it's beautiful, but it's old. You know what I mean? And I think that what they've done is absolutely amazing, and there's a lot of love in that house. We've been over there, we've visited, I just think it's turned out to be beautiful. But, old brick is old brick. It's going to need some kind of attention, whether it be a clear coat or a paint, it doesn't last forever. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
All right. I'm Kyle Russell, the painting contractor. I just want y'all to make a decision, I need to get the job done and get over with. Okay?
Sir, you need to give your address for the record.
Oh, 603 West Avenue. I'm the house that needs painting. And, because it just keeps going on, and I keep getting these phone calls, that's not a faux finish I've done on that brick, and I just want to see if y'all can kind of get this resolved so we can get the job done and over with.
Well, we're sorry to be an inconvenience to you. I'd like to make a comment relative to the HPC and some of the things that were said. You know, this is the only board that we've got that goes through extensive training over, over the guidelines and the rules, and there certainly are the guidelines, that term is certainly one that probably could perhaps use a little bit of clearing up or made a little bit stronger, but with that HPC, they follow the rules that are in place, and those rules that are in place are mimicked by or taken from state and national guidelines. They're not, they're not items that were just kind of pulled out of the hat. And while I do think that some of the language going forward could perhaps be made a little bit clearer or maybe a little more stern, I want to be very clear that, as I sit up here, that the HPC, regardless of what council decides to do in the next little bit, the HPC did absolutely nothing wrong, they did exactly what they were supposed to do, staff did exactly what they were supposed to do, and I want to applaud them for the job well done on that. You know, I think the challenge that you have as council, and again, I don't vote unless y'all get totally... y'all get totally split on this, but, you know, there are rules that are put in place, and they sit in place right now in this snapshot period of time. And if you want to change them moving forward, that's one thing. And if you want to, whatever you choose to do, the one thing that is a body that governs and sets policy, the one thing that I don't think would be good for us to do, and again, doing whatever you're going to do in the next little bit, is if you, if you choose one way, we can't, we can't thumb our nose at the rules that are in place and not do something to change them. And I just wanted to make sure that that got out there as y'all continue to discuss and deliberate the decision that's coming forward. Step forward and speak.
My name's Andrea Wallace. I live at 15 Caswell Road. HPC has seen me a couple of times, also asking to paint my brick. I only asked once. I withdrew it. But, you know, I'm very much in favor of it. I understand why they declined it. I also have done some reading because I want to understand all points of view, and they look at it from a preservation standpoint. So, you know, to me, painting the brick doesn't change the architectural features of the home. There's typically nothing really unique about the bricks, you know, decoratively. However, I do understand that certain kinds of paint should be used if you paint your brick. I'm willing to do that. The breathable, you know, certain kinds of paint that won't break down or trap the moisture behind the brick, so I understand that. But, you know, I would like to see the guideline change for the city so that, you know, those of us who really are trying to make our house beautiful and doing everything we can, you don't go anywhere in Atlanta or most of the small towns. And there's these, most of the homes that you see that are truly beautiful are painted brick. It's, you know, those are the ones that really stand out, and I think it would only improve the beauty of our downtown to do that.
Thank you for your comments. All right, anyone else? Any further discussion? Counsel, if there's no other discussion, it's up to you. What?
Mayor, I think it might be appropriate after, since you've heard from members of the public. I don't know if they have any additional comment, but you might want to ask staff if, based upon what they've heard, if they have anything they would like to add.
Staff, and based on what you've heard, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
City planners who's got a couple of expertise in historic preservation, serve as the chairman of the Historic Preservation Commission for the city of Kentshaw, and is relieved on what HPC is for.
All right. So I think we all can admit that the guidelines are a little vague in areas. You could probably use a little more emphasis and clarity in how they're, how they're written. If you go through and you look at all the guidelines for how to handle brickwork, how to handle painting in the other sections as well, you kind of start to piece together the fact that the, I think the intent of the guidelines was not to paint brick before, or unpainted brick before the guidelines were adopted or after the guidelines were adopted. Brick that was formally painted before could remain painted. But there is, there's a strong element to the guidelines that the owners are responsible for maintaining the brick, and there's guidelines in there for how you need to do that. As far as repointing, as far as replacing brick, those guidelines are well-defined in there. So going forward, any change to the guidelines or to the ordinance probably needs to take into consideration the fact that there is a strong maintenance element expected of property owners with historic brick. So just painting a surface because things don't look right, because there's mortar issues, because there's cracked bricks, won't necessarily fix the problem. It becomes almost a Band-Aid potentially in some situations. So we still need to figure out how to encourage and maybe even enforce maintenance of brick and mortar in these old homes that have the unpainted brick before any kind of painting of the brick is considered as the cure-all, because it's really not going to be a cure-all if you haven't really fixed what's behind the paint. Owning an old home, it's an act of love. It's an expensive act of love. It takes a lot of money to go into it. It takes a lot of money to keep the stuff up. All the comments relevant to the type of mortar that was used previously are, they're spot-on. The older projects that I've worked on from an engineering perspective, I've encountered the same things, but we've also been able to, to match the mortar that's been produced, to match the bricks that are 100 years old or older, and give new life to some of the structures. But it doesn't happen without deep pockets and some money. So there needs to be consideration into maintenance of the brick, what people are going through in addition to how we really want to focus on painting brick, because that's not necessarily the cure-all for stopping moisture or holding bricks together. Eventually, everything that's happening on the backside of that paint in the bricks is still going to happen, whether or not it's painted or not. And if it's painted, it may just happen at a slower rate. So just, just some more things to consider in how you rule on this appeal tonight.
Hey, one question, and I was actually asking Keith this. So if council so chooses to reverse the Historic Preservation Board's decision, and we allow the painting to go through, is there any more checks and balances that they're going to have to continue to meet in regards to painting or anything else that's going on? Who monitors that? I mean, I'm, prior to this, I was completely oblivious. But is that your staff, or who, who monitors to make sure each of these work sites that are in these zones or districts?
It comes from three areas. It comes from staff, first of all. If we're able to see something in the field that's not right, we can take action. It comes from the HPC members, and the same thing, if they're in the field, they're driving by, they see something that's not right, they'll call us. And then it just comes from neighbors, other people in the community that see something that's not right. So there's three different areas, but eventually the stuff gets funneled back to staff whenever there's a complaint, and we have to make a judgment if it's a legitimate complaint that we need to see, or is it something we can talk through with the commission and work it, work out a solution without the formality of stop work orders and that sort of thing.
So basically, all it is, is that we'll release the stop work order, and they will continue as planned, and then somebody goes out and does a final inspection? Is that...
Correct.
Paint doesn't technically require an inspection. However, painting a brick in a historic district would require HPC approval. If y'all reverse their decision, how does that work?
So others that might have gotten painted at some point, they were just overlooked or missed?
Right.
Just not brought to anybody's attention?
And at the last meeting, there was actually a case for West Church Street. The applicant wants to paint her brick house. It's kind of a boring-looking structure, and she thinks painting it will add some pizazz to and make it interesting. And she said, told the commission, if they did not vote to have the applicant remove the paint from West Avenue, that they were just going to paint their house and ask for forgiveness because they perceived that what was happening with, with the Womacks as being, "We know better. We're going to do it anyway, and we'll just ask for forgiveness." That was their perception. And those comments were raised in the HPC meeting also.
Well, I would, I would count that point by saying that whatever is done here tonight in no way sets a precedent for anybody's actions going forward. Just because if it gets reversed or what have you, or held up, doesn't mean that somebody can just go out and do whatever they want to willy-nilly. And I would caution them against just saying, "Well, they did it." Because nowhere does just one decision set a precedent to...
Right. It doesn't set a precedent, but it sure sends a perception. And that's something else we'd have to battle with.
If they're engaged in that too.
Yeah, but if you go, if you go down, if you go down West Avenue right now, just down from there, there's a painted brick house. So you can say, "Well, that house is painted brick. I'm going to paint mine too." But which, which to your point, I mean, it's, you can't say that.
And that comes, yeah, that comes down to precedent at that moment in time when that ordinance was adopted.
Right. And again, the HPC was put in place for a specific reason, and the standards that exist for HPC say that it's not encouraged or it's forbidden or however, whatever terminology you want to use, that painting brick is, is kind of a no-no. And again, you can make a decision whether or not you feel it's appropriate or not, or you can make a decision whether you think it looks good or not. We can change the guidelines to say it's allowed or not allowed. But in doing so, you're going, I mean, as a body, we're saying that we know better than a group of people that are historic preservationists. And again, that's, that's, I guess those are decisions that are...
Well, that's my question is...
We're not going to make that decision or change tonight, but I'm just saying those are things to consider.
Okay. So we'll vote on this, and then council will advise Mr. Hardgory, the Historic Preservation. Keith, how do we start that process of making this change?
I think we're the policymakers, and if there's, if there's an idea, if there's some research, I mean, I just don't think it's good policy for us just to pull it out of the sky since, I don't think, I don't want to speak for anybody up here, but I don't think anybody, one of us would consider ourselves a historic preservation expert. But I, but again, I do think that if, if there's a change that, if it just does apply to our community, that we take a little time and care. But I think we owe it to, we owe it to the residents. We owe it to the people that are serving in the HPC to put, and to our staff to put rules in place that, that makes sense. You know, again, for example, if somebody at the next HPC meeting comes, or we find somebody painting their house next week, and they say, "Well, you made this decision on Thursday night," and it goes before the HPC, or if somebody just decides they want to go to the HPC based on this decision, the HPC, I'm assuming, would probably make the same decision based on the rules that they have in front of them. And, and again, if we want to come up with a set of standards or a process or a, you know, like I said, standards that need to be met versus, I don't know how you measure deteriorated brick. If it meets some set of criteria that says, "Well, in these conditions, then painting brick would be appropriate or allowable," then, then that perhaps would be a step in the right direction. But, but anyway, again, anything that we would do moving forward, again, we need to do something moving forward. The one thing, as I said at the beginning, what we can't do is make a decision tonight and then decide we're just going to do nothing and leave the same things in place because we're going to keep on running into the same issue.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Hardgory? How, how many requests do you say you receive to paint brick in historic districts in a year? Is it a...
In my two years here, I've seen, I think, maybe two or three.
So it's not that big?
It's relatively small. Most, there's not many all-brick houses here.
Have any of them been approved?
No.
But again, I think current trend is for that to be a little bit more popular.
If you're watching the home improvement shows, they're all painting brick, but they're not necessarily painting brick in historic districts either on the shows.
I have one other question for you. Have you approved the full extension of that house?
Oh, yes. Yeah, that was, that was approved, I think, with a, with a majority vote. Everyone was, was looking forward to seeing the, the end result of that second-story addition.
March of last year.
Okay. So I mean, you, I mean, that, so what we're talking about mainly is the front of the house, right? Okay.
The historic brick, yes, sir. The front sides.
Any more questions for Mr. Hardgory? Thank you, sir.
Let me try to craft a motion.
Before you do that, I do want to give the homeowner an opportunity or representative to make, I guess would be made, a closing statement of some sort, if you'd care to.
I, I would just say, Mayor and council members, thank you for your time. Thank you for your consideration and your thoughtful conversation. I, I completely understand as someone whose father serves on the Historical Commission in Carrollton, I completely appreciate your comments about the position they're in. But I would say that I think the most important thing about this is it's, it's a lot more than just they need to be tightened up or they need to be clear. These are, in my legal opinion, unconstitutional guidelines because of their vagueness, and they are being given the force of law. And I would, I would urge the council members to take that into consideration. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Councilman Fox?
All right. Well, first of all, I want to thank, I know Laine Pritchett's back there. She's on the Historic Commission. I know, know that's not an easy job, and I know some tempers probably flared that I hope everybody's regretful of, you know, at that meeting. But the motion I would like to craft is that we reverse the HPC's decision, allow the homeowner to finish painting his home, and then, if I can continue, for us to take a look at what we feel is the proper guidelines within the Historic Preservation Commission's rules where people can paint their brick, you know? It's, there's, for, just, we need to look at that and change those or update those type guidelines.
Okay.
Second.
All right. By hand, all in favor in the capes saying aye? Aye. All right. Did that pass unanimously? Anybody opposed? Thank you. Passed unanimously. The next item is, where are we? Old Tennessee Street and Highway 41, Mr. Lovell.
Mayor, due to the realignment of 20 and the new extension in the People's Valley Road there, the Old Tennessee road bed basically serves no purpose and needs to be abandoned, and the adjoining property owner to that has requested that the city go through the process of abandoning it. Tonight is the first step in that process where y'all would actually authorize us to advertise that publicly so we can receive public comments. And then at y'all's, I believe it's the first meeting in May, the actual resolution would come before y'all to abandon that property. There are no utility conflicts or anything else, and staff has, has no objections to the resolution.
Okay. And this is listed as a public hearing, so I need to give everybody the, anybody the opportunity to comment on that?
Yes, sir.
All right. Once again, a public hearing for this road closure. Anybody wishing to steep, step forward and speak for against may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. You said we don't vote this time, or we do?
You do vote on the resolution to authorize us to, to advertise.
All right. Chair will entertain a motion to do such.
Make a motion?
I'll second that.
All in favor in the capes saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, Mr. Lovell.
Yes, Mayor. This is to update our letter on file with Depository Trust Company, which is the agency that basically holds securities for people that buy them, own bond issues. Our current letter is from 2002, and they've asked that we updated it. It is recommended by staff for your approval.
Yeah, what did you just talk about there?
The Depository Trust Company letter? Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped.
Well, that's okay. We've, this was...
I'm using this fancy new iPad.
If you've got your, this is item H1 on the agenda. Keith is just jumping ahead a bit. So we can go ahead and take that item and move back. That's okay, Keith.
All right.
Anybody, any discussion or want to put a motion on that one?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor in the capes saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Let's go back to blocking railroad crossings. Mr. Lovell?
Mayor, we have an old ordinance adopted back in the '70s regarding the city being able to impose fines with respect to blocking railroad crossings. That is preempted by federal law, and therefore, we are deleting that, recommending that ordinance be deleted.
Regrettably so. Chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion.
All in favor in the capes saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Now we've got a resolution. Actually, before this one, should I ask for a, to add the item adjacent to it, or should we approve this first?
No, just go ahead and call it, and I'll make my explanation, and y'all can add it.
All right. We'll go ahead and, I'll go ahead and, the next item, Keith.
Okay. Mayor, this is a resolution to authorize condemnation of some property out on Highway 13 that is needed for the Transco Delivery Station. By authorizing this condemnation tonight, the city will have the power to file an imminent domain proceedings in court. I would request that y'all authorize this tonight. However, at last second, as sometimes happens in these matters, we have reached a settlement with the property owner or their representatives that are here tonight, and they have agreed to sell the property to the city for $115,000. So what I would recommend you do is to approve the condemnation resolution authorization just in case, for some reason, we do not close, and then add to the agenda that we are authorized to purchase this property for $115,000 if it closes within two weeks. I would ask, since it is technically a public hearing, if Mr. Cullen had anything he wanted to add to this. That is our agreement, sir? Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you. So right now, we're taking up the issue of the resolution, our resolution authorizing condemnation. Chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion, talk about the condemnation, and also to add the...
Let's go ahead, if you don't mind, sir. Let's, we... Let's go ahead, if you don't mind, sir, let's, we just add this, we'll add it after we got this. Thank you. So is your motion still good?
Sure.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
All right, I got a motion, a second, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Chair will entertain a motion to add that item to the agenda, add an item to the agenda.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Mr. Lovell, I think you've already explained it once. Does anybody need it explained again? Just, just one sentence, so we've got it in the record, that we've added something in exactly what we're adding.
To authorize the purchase of this property for $115,000 within two weeks.
Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to authorize the purchase of the property for $115,000 if it closes in two weeks.
I'll second that.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Grove, you've got the next item.
Where are we at now?
We're on I, I-1, yes, certification.
Yeah, this is the homeless shelter application for a DCA grant of $60,000. They do it every year, this is pretty much a board plate, it basically says that you know about it, and approve it, and just one of the tick mark, tick items that DCA has had them jump through, or recommended for your approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Hassabrock, you have got the next couple, and Gary Riggs, you're on deck.
The Electric Department is seeking authorization to purchase materials to, necessary for lighting the new Village Hill Drive, is, Village Hills has been accepted in, into the city, and so therefore, we have the responsibility of lighting this, and the design calls for seven light poles and the LED fixtures, and as you recall, a couple of years ago, we entered into a campaign to use the LED lighting to relight all the lights in the city, and we chose at that time, any, any new lighting would be LED lighting, so we, we got bids at that time, and we wanted to standardize on materials, all the, all the supplies and materials that, that would be needed to repair these lights, so if we, so we wanted to standardize on one type of light, so we did that, and anyway, we, so this is a sole source purchase, $10,913, and would be from Erby Company as the regional vendor for these, this light.
Okay. And, forgive me, as we're adapting to having paperless and technology, I'm having trouble pulling up the right file, is this, is this a single-source bid? Is this the lowest bid? I, I know it's...
A couple of years ago, we, we...
I, I know that we went with the one company, but is, so it is...
Right.
It's kind of treated as a single-source, this is the product, and this is so that we've got everything uniform throughout the system, we're not having to stock a bunch of different suppliers, parts, and service our stuff.
Correct.
Okay. And you're comfortable with the price you got from them?
Yes, they, they were the low price, and, and from what I've seen, we, we periodically check the pricing, they're still the, one of the lowest-priced light.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a clarification. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Continue on, Don.
We, we come to you tonight to, to ask you to sign contracts for directional boring. We've got some old contracts that, under, on the advice of Keith Lovell, that these contracts are outdated, and, and we need to, I think every, every five years or so, we need to enter into new contracts, so we, we went out to seek pricing from four different, four different vendors for this service, and this service is, by the way, sometimes we have to go under I-75, DOT requires us to go underground, and, and we have to bore, you know, there's, there's sometimes four, 500 feet bore that you have to put in the ground, and we have other places, too, where we have to go under existing asphalt, so we need this capability to be able to call in a contractor. It's not something we do often, but it's necessary for us to install our underground facilities from time to time, so we've got, we received four bids, and we're taking, we're asking that we, that council approve the signing of contracts for the two lowest bidders, that way we will have, if, if one, one person can't reach the, do our work in a timely manner, we got another, we have another source. And so we're asking that council approve the signing of the two low-bid contracts.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments, or motions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Riggs.
Mayor, the first item is a development agreement for the gas advantage with the developer that's doing the senior development on Gouthat Ferry.
Okay. Questions, comments, or motions?
Just a comment. You said two years on the ROI, that's, that's pretty good.
Okay. Any other discussion, and if not, a motion.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please, Gary.
This is a heater for the Transco Meter Station, and it's $336,100.
And you mentioned if you didn't do this, the ground would freeze.
Well, yeah, for every, for every 100 pounds of pressure that you drop, you drop seven degrees in temperature, so that line operate, the maximum allowable operating pressure is 1,440 pounds. So if they're operating at 1,400, and we're taking it 600, we will drop 56 degrees if we don't heat the gas.
Okay. Very good. All right. Any discussion on this item? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Gary. Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Mayor, council. This first item is a preliminary engineering agreement with CSX. We would like for them to review a proposed culvert expansion at the Cook Street Crossing, and it's for $5,700, it'll be paid for through SPOLOST.
Okay. Any discussion on this item? Couple pictures over there, and if there's no discussion, motion is in order.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please, Tom.
Yes, sir, this is a bid award for purchasing 600 garbage carts. We purchase garbage carts annually. The low bidder was Toter, and the bid was $28,548.08, and this is a budgeted item.
I'm looking at the picture, a slightly different design than what we've had in the past? Is that a different vendor than we've had?
That's the la, the last two times we've purchased, we've purchased Toter, and our guys prefer them, so we were glad they were the low bidder.
Good. All right, thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson.
Yes, sir, Mayor and council. We took quotes for park amenities, which included 11 picnic tables and 15 trash receptacles for, mainly for the new Aubrey Street Pool area and the new tennis center. Got 12 bids back, the low bid, mixed specifications from Furniture Leisure, an amount of $12,475 is my recommendation, and this will be paid for out of GL bond funds.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Greg on this item? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, Greg.
Yes, sir, Mayor and council, this is for cultured stone that'll be used for the, our sign base and sign columns that'll be erected at the Dellinger Park front entrance. Council approved Steve Duckett, Steve Dutton Masonry back in January, and part of our agreement with them is we furnish this cultured stone. This is the same stone that's on our, all of our buildings at Dellinger Park, and the, the local vendor for that is Elite Stone. I recommend their bid of $10,617.60 for the material.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
At the time that, that you hired the, are we, council approved the masonry contract? You did show it to council, so they know what it looks like, right?
Yes, I did.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion? Not a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve. Second. Go ahead.
Wow. Mayor, you figured it out. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
You're gonna get buzzers.
Jeez.
Thank you. And Mr. Jones? It's only two for you tonight. Arthur Gable.
Well, I, I was above my average last week. First up, we've got, we need to buy a roll-up door, it's 12-by-12 door to go in the maintenance shop, the wastewater plant. As far as we know, the door that's there is original construction, sometime in the mid-'80s. As you well know, we do a little maintenance out there, so that door gets used, and it is done. Took bids, had three bidders, low bid was Arban Equipment at $6,145, and would recommend that for your approval.
Question, is, all three are more than capable of doing the job, correct?
Absolutely.
Ready for a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that would go with the best bid of ground construction.
And I'll second that motion.
Fine with me.
Before we vote on that, again, I'm sorry, we're adapting to new technology, and maybe you've got in front of you the dollar amount difference between those two?
$900.
That's, yeah.
For a, and the total cost is?
Graham was $7,075.
Okay. We got a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, Bob.
Next up, we have, we've had two pump failures, one at each, the sewer lift stations in Waterford and at the Main Street Lift Station. What we'd like to do is replace the Waterford pump, rebuild the Main Street pump. These are a brand-specific, we, we standardize all our lift station pumps, so this is a flight-only. They have given us a price of $19,748.22 to make both pumps operational. Recommend that for your approval.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on this item? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Let's see, Mr. Porter, you got the next item?
Yes, Mayor, and the next one is the builder's risk insurance for the new gas facility. The site work will begin next week, we have actually started receiving some materials with it, we have purchased builder's risk insurance at the cost of $7,575 annually, that'll be prorated, if the building takes, which is estimated to take about 10 months.
All right. Thank you. Any questions or discussion on this item? If not, chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And Dan, you've got this first reading of the ordinance, if you'll take that up for us.
Yes, Mayor, as you recall, as a prior discussion, we have a water and sewer bond that we're working on, that's going to be coming up in the next month or so with City Council. Part of that is the master bond ordinance. We've had one that's amended in place since 1984, who we really haven't had time to re-adopt a new one, as we've issued new bonds over the time period. We have an opportunity, as this one remaining bond gets folded into the new bond, that's going to be issued here in the next few months, if the City Council approves, to update the master bond ordinance, just kind of update the legal language, it's kind of changed over the many years, and this is, again, the first reading of this ordinance, but it's going to be recommended for your approval.
Okay. Again, this is the first reading, anybody got any questions for Mr. Porter on this item? We'll take this up for final consideration at our meeting, our second meeting, Thursday of this month.
Mayor, I do, I would like to advise you that there will be some minor changes to the final version that y'all will be approving, as they get additional financial information, and they fill in some blanks with, that are currently in the ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. We do have cause to add, Mr. Lovell, pardon me, three items to the agenda this evening?
You have a resolution, I believe, you need to add, and a declaration of taking, and a contract with DOT, or is it with DOT or the FAA?
G-Dot.
With G-Dot.
Okay, so those three items, and chair will entertain a motion to add those three items.
So moved. I'll second that.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those three items are added.
All right, and Mayor, before y'all proceed, as y'all know, our office has recused ourself from the resolution and declaration of taking, so I'll go ahead and leave while those are in process, and I'll return when y'all consider the contract. Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe Mr. Beecham is here to represent the city in this matter.
Okay. Thank you. So, Mr. Beecham, if you'll step forward, again, just for our clerk, name and address, and just started on that first item.
I'm sorry, Frank Beecham, with Brentson Askewberry in Rome, Georgia, 615 West First Street. And we're here tonight to get a resolution and a declaration of taking, signed, I mean, approved for a 9.265 acre fee simple acquisition south of the airport, and a 1.773 acre permanent easement for drainage south of the airport. And the documents have been presented to you previously, and we've discussed them, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have about them.
Okay. Any questions right now for Mr. Beecham? Thank you. And out of respect, go ahead, I'll just, out of respect for the, the family, we typically don't take comment prior to taking an action like this, but out of respect for the family that's, that's the other side of this, we'll allow comment, and again, if you'll give your name and address for our clerk.
Mayor, council, my name is Linda Brunt. I'm an attorney in town. Along with Don Evans, we represent Dellinger Holding, and Kena Butler, Dee Dellinger, asked that I come tonight and voice their continued strong opposition to the taking of the property. They understand the need for the airport improvements, they understand the need for the road realignment, for the improvement, to the runway approach, the extension, the opposition has to do with the drainage. The city's gonna run a 54-inch pipe under the road and dump the water on their property without having in place right now any sort of final plan to accommodate the damage from the water. Now, we have been told, "Trust us, when the construction plans are done, we'll take care of it." But the problem is, you're moving forward now, you're taking the property now, and your plans are not final. It doesn't give us any ascertainable standard to be able to evaluate damage. So how do we negotiate? How do we get our appraiser to value this? It's really not fair. It's not fair to the Dellingers, it's not fair to any citizen, not in this community. And the reality is, the Dellingers had plans to develop this property. If they had come to you with this drainage plan, you'd have sent them packing. It's not equitable, it's not just, it's not right. So we ask on behalf of the Dellingers that you not approve the taking, not until you can tell us what accommodations you're gonna make for the drainage as you dump it onto their property. We've been told it's G-Dot, but G-Dot's not taking the property, the city's taking the property. So Dee and Kena have asked me, "What are you gonna do to keep from damaging the property?" You're taking it now, not down the road, and there's nothing on file now to tell them how you're going to keep the property from being damaged when you dump this water from this pipe onto the property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, Frank Beecham, again. It is true that the final design for the drainage is not complete. We have submitted a preliminary design, or we have had a preliminary design submitted to us from G-Dot, and we have immediately turned that over for the Dellingers and their representatives, including their engineer, to review. We had a telephone discussion with their engineer that I was involved in, my partner, Andy Davis, Don Evans, and the Dellingers' engineer, whose name escapes me right now. He acknowledged that we, that the design was a good-faith effort. It was a good-faith preliminary design. I heard him say those words to me over the phone. But it is not complete. However, there are checks and balances in place that the city of Cartersville already has. We've had Wade Wilson, working with Dan Porta, has gotten Wade Wilson to take a look at the concerns raised by Ms. Brunt and Mr. Evans. And he has, there are checks and balances in place. Once the construction plans are complete, the city of Cartersville Public Works will review the plans to verify they've met stormwater management for new development and redevelopment. The construction plans will have to meet city of Cartersville soil erosion, sedimentation, and pollution control ordinances. The state environmental protection division will review those plans. So there will not be a drop of water going through that pipe until it's been reviewed by the city of Cartersville's compliance folks and the state of Georgia's compliance folks. And then finally, it's not as if there's no remedy. Worst case happens, and somehow we don't do what we say we're going to do, and bad stuff happens with the water. They're not without a remedy. The Dellingers, it's not a great remedy. They have to sue us, but they're not without a remedy to address the concerns. So, and then, so why are we doing this now without a complete design? The reason is very simple. It's a funding issue. The federal government, as you all know, is funding a large portion of this project, and it's a complicated arrangement between the Georgia Department of Transportation that builds highways, the Georgia Department of Transportation wing that focuses on airports, and the federal government who's greasing the wheels with all the funding for all of this. And I've been given a deadline to get the action, the condemnation action on file and the funds that are being authorized in this resolution, the $639,000 deposited with the registry of the clerk of courts for Bartow County by early April. And so we've put it off as long as we can. I wish I had a perfect design to show the Dellingers and their representatives, but I do not. But for funding purposes, we need to move forward now.
And again, for point of clarification, this isn't a design that the city of Cartersville is doing. This is a design that the Georgia Department of Transportation is doing.
That's correct. That's correct. And the design is tied in with the water handling for the road changes as well, so that's an additional complication. Quite frankly, I mean, it's a bureaucracy that hasn't quite gotten us where we all need to be right now, but I think we have a process going forward where we're going to have a proper design, and we're going to make their engineer happy with it. That's my goal, anyway, through this.
Thank you. All right.
Can I just say one more thing?
We have no beef with Mr. Beecham. Mr. Beecham's been great. I want you to understand that. But Georgia DOT is not taking the property. The city of Cartersville is taking the property. And to say, you've got a remedy, you can come back and sue us, is hardly a remedy. It is not fair to put them in this position. Now, this is a Title 32 condemnation. If you go to Title 22, to the Landowner's Bill of Rights, it specifies that a landowner should not be put in a position of having to come back and sue government in order to be treated fairly. All I can tell you is, you're taking the property now, not when the plans are going to be finished. The plan should be ready now. The plan should have been ready when you went to the federal government. Why didn't you get the plans in order before you went and got the funding? To tell them, you're the sacrificial lamb so that we can get our federal funding, is not fair. You're taking the property now. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any further discussion? Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair, motion is approved unanimously. What was the second item we were doing, and is Keith supposed to be in for that one?
No.
Okay.
The second item is intertwined with the first. It's a declaration of taking, which also has to be approved and executed by this body.
Okay. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, and contract with the DOT. Mr. Porter, you can handle that one.
Yes, Mayor and Council. As part of that process, the G-DOT has a contract for you. It's a draft agreement and like to get approval. It's up to the city attorney and city manager reviewing it finally, but it has the funding in there for the storm drainage easement, as well as additional funding for the appraisal. Basically, they had a partial amount of the appraisal and a different grant funding. We've already received the money. We haven't received the money, but the grant is there. What the state is doing is putting aside $639,600, which is the appraised value of the parcels that were in question. That is what the state is approving at this point in time, unless another item is agreed to, or a value is agreed to at a later date. That's what this grant for you this evening. I recommend approval, again, with the city manager and the city attorney, finally agreeing to these numbers.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion, questions for Dan on this? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Is there any other business that needs to come for council this evening?
Mayor, there was a gentleman outside. I know he told me he wanted to speak before council tonight.
Sure. Step forward, sir, and I know you did once already, but I need you to give your name and your address one more time for our clerk.
Justice King, 206 West Avenue. We have, we have a problem with speeding on our road. And I live between South Avenue and Bartow Street. Mr. Sanders put speed things out in front of my house. Put them out on a Tuesday. I was told I could go to him. When they took them up, he would give me the readings, which I have here. The readings he gave me didn't start till four days later, which was the same day that they cut the street up to replace the water line. Now, I've talked to Major Ellis in the police department multiple times. I have a petition from everybody from Irwin Street to Etowah Street. Everybody's signature on it. We need something done. It's like Talladega on our street. We just want something done so nobody gets killed or hurt. I'm disabled, but I walk my dog. I've almost been hit multiple times. My wife's son's been hit, a dog, other, my other neighbors. We want something done. And I'm coming to y'all because I've gone up the chain of command.
Okay. Well, again, the speed study, I know that the data's been gathered. I've talked with Mr. Sanders about this, and the speed study shows that the speed is consummate or within about, I think, a mile and a half of the actual speed limit on that road.
Like I said, the day this started was the day they cut a 4-foot, a 16-foot, a 6-foot hole in the road to replace the water line. And of course, they put the plates, or whatever you call them, on cross for five days at this age. Now, if you want to do another study, that's fine. I think this one's a little tainted. I also have, I had two cameras in my yard for 10 days, the hunting, outdoor cameras, that have disappeared somehow, showing that there are no cops that patrol that road, as I was told. And we just want something done. My neighbors, like I said, I've got a petition of everybody from Irwin Street to Etowah Street. We just want something done. And you're more than welcome to look at this, and I can tell you the exact time they put the thing in and the date.
Okay. Okay. Cool. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Who do we ask you to put in on the radar? Is that Tom, or is that?
Not State. State. You're not operating on the road.
No. We're not.
I even told Dr. Major Ellis, they can park my driveway.
Okay.
I mean, I have no problem with that.
It would just be visual observation on that road.
Yeah, what I was asking, sir, is we have certain roads that we can't run radar, so we, technically, we can't stop somebody for speeding, but we can do faster conditions.
I've been there almost four years, and I've seen two people pulled over. Last one was in January 1st, February. I walked down the street and thanked the officer.
Okay.
I mean, there's no patrol, there's no nothing, unless it's a fire truck or an ambulance or, you know, a high-speed somewhere. There's just, there's just too much speed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other business that needs to come for council this evening? Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, Bob.
Next up, we have, we've had two pump failures, one at each, the sewer lift stations in Waterford and the Main Street lift station. What we'd like to do is replace the Waterford pump, rebuild the Main Street pump. These are a brand-specific. We standardize all our lift station pumps, so this is a flight-only. They have given us a price of $19,748.22 to make both pumps operational. Recommend that for your approval.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion, questions for Dan on this? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.